Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, so I will call this October 1st, 2025 special meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission to order. Chairman Martin is not available this evening, so guess what, guys? I will be pinch hitting since it's playoff time. Ms. Watson, would you take the role, please?
Mills?
Yes.
Stoman?
Here.
Jokowski? Jurewski, thank you. And Courier?
Correct, and here.
We do have a-
Good evening. This is, uh, this is one of my comments. I'm on Zoom.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum.
Mr. Mills, I'd like to make a motion.
I was going to ask if we-
Sorry. I'd like to move that Commissioner Martin and Commissioner Ryan be excused.
Second. I have a motion and a second to excuse the two absent commissioners. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Before we proceed with their, well, actually, before we proceed with the agenda, Before proceeding further with the agenda, do the commissioners or staff have any supplements, modifications, or revisions to the agenda to propose? Okay, seeing none, let's move to item three. Minutes of prior meetings. There being no minutes in our packet, we will delay further review of minutes until our next meeting. Next is the public comment section. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to comment either in person or online regarding any subject that is not on our agenda for this meeting and that is directly relevant to the city of Anacortes. Do we have anyone in the audience? No? Do we have anyone online?
There are no hands raised online.
Okay. Seeing no participants for public comment, we'll move to item five of our regular agenda, which is public hearings. We do not have any public hearing scheduled for this evening, so we'll move to item six A. 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update, the Development Regulation Amendments. This is a continued discussion from, I believe, our prior two meetings preceding tonight. We have been presented with a draft. The proposed amendments to Title 19 of the Municipal Code were released for public review and comment on September 17th of this year. The public comment period, I believe, will continue for another three weeks, ending on October 22nd. Following that date or that evening, there will be a public hearing during our regular planning commission meeting. Would staff like to present either an introduction to the two divisions that I think we have left, which are Division Four and Six? And also perhaps some follow-up answers from questions that were raised in our prior two meetings? Ms. Grage?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, my name is Libby Grage, and I am Planning Manager for the City of Anacortes Planning Community and Economic Development Department. And yes, I do have some slides prepared to help, hopefully, help guide us through the discussion tonight regarding some of the remaining Development Regulation Amendments that have been requested and, and proposed in the draft that has been out since the 12th, as you mentioned. And I, I also do want to note that an updated packet was sent out earlier this afternoon. Sorry, I'm just trying to navigate on a different setup than I'm used to. So, the items that were added to the packet were a, the public comments that have been received over the last couple of weeks. And then also, the, there was a response from Transpo. You'll remember that. Chris Como from Transpo, our transportation consultant on the comp plan and development regulation updates, was here last, at the last meeting, talking about street standard updates. And there were some questions from commission that came up, and he's prepared a memo that's in your packet to, to respond to some of those items. And I'm happy to address those if you would like, or they're there for your information, and they're available on the public website.
Ms. Grage, having just gotten this this afternoon, I did a speed read, and the introduction said that there was two areas that he was responding to, but I only see one area highlighted in red. These are two items, but I see is in 19.52.040, B as in boy, five. There's a bunch of red that constitute changes. Is that covering both of the areas that he highlighted? Or that he mentioned?
Well, let me just take a look here. So, the first one was a concern about the cross-section, the modification to the cross-section for J Avenue along between 22nd and 29th. And there was some discussion about the fact that there's school and pool and lots of, lots of activity and, and kids, and questions about why the, uh, the street standard would allow for, you know, on-street bike lanes, sharrows. And so, he's gone through and, and described the existing constraints of that road section and right-of-way, and the reasons that the proposal is the way that it is for that section, and had just a couple of options, probably not for consideration during the development regulation updates, but, you know, future potential projects that could make changes along that corridor to get bikes off the street if, if that was something that the city wanted to pursue.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think I broke the code now. The, the red highlighted areas where there was, as a result, proposing wording changes.
Yeah.
And the, the information to the other items is included in black type.
Right.
Because it's just info. Thank you.
Any other questions on that document before I put it away? I know you just, you just got it, so let me know. Thanks. All right, so just continue right along here with my PowerPoint. So, the staff's goals for tonight, and hopefully, they'll be yours, too, are to complete our discussion of the proposed 2025 Development Regulation Amendments, or at least complete our, you know, first review or, you know, first kind of time that Planning Commission is being presented some of these amendments that are in the draft and opportunity for discussion and questions. And then also hoping that you will identify any issues within the sections that we are talking about tonight, or otherwise, that you have, that you want to have further discussion or questions on, so that staff can prepare that information and get that to you, because we do have a public hearing coming up on October 22nd. So, just want to make sure that you have the information that you need to be prepared for that, and let me know. Thank you. As, as you mentioned, the document that we'll be talking about tonight has been available since September 12th. It's the draft Development Regulation Amendments. It's on our project website at planacortes.org. The written comment period is open until 3:00 PM on October 22nd, and that's just to provide enough time for staff to be able to get comments, if any do come in to the commission or print them out prior to the meeting. And then the public hearing will be held that evening at 6:00 PM. Recap of the Planning Commission's look at the Development Regulation Amendments. All the meetings where we've had discussions about the, each of the chapters within Title 19. Today, we have our special meeting, October 1st, and the next meeting on the 8th is, has been canceled. And then the 22nd will be the public hearing for the Development Regulation Amendments. So, the, the suggested order that we go through this is to hit on the, as you mentioned, Chair, the Division Four and Six. There are a couple of amendment requests within those sections that we'll go over, and then go through some of the follow-up items from Planning Commission's questions at the September 17th meeting. You have quite a few documents, I know. It's kind of hard to keep track of them all, so the documents that I'll be working from, and hopefully you have accessible, are the staff memo that was in your packet, dated September 25th, 2025. Looks like this. And there's the tables that identify all of the different sections of the municipal, of Title 19 Municipal Code. And it's kind of tracking all of the summary of the proposed amendments, and the ones that Planning Commission hasn't talked about yet are noted in that document. And then Attachment A has some specific recommendations for text on some of those amendments and the follow-up items from last meeting, or the 17th. So, I'll be using that document and then the draft Development Regulation Amendments titled Septem-, or, excuse me, dated September 12th, to kind of, hopefully, I won't have to go back and forth too much. So, tonight, we'll be discussing these code sections and potential amendments. Again, Division Four and Division Six. In 1941, we've got a couple under allowed uses. 1942, Forman Intensity, we have some requested amendments that are related to development in the marine mixed-use zone. 1943 is our residential use standards, and we have some, or a recommendation for you on what to do with rooming houses. And also, another amendment request relating to residential development in the marine mixed-use zone and allowances there. And then finally, we'll move to Division Six, which is project design. And there are a couple of requested amendments regarding balcony projections and shared roof decks. And we do have, Jimmy Blaze is with MJB Properties, and he's in the audience tonight, so I might ask him. MJB is the quester of the majority of the amendments that we'll be talking about tonight, so he's here to provide additional information or answer questions that you might have. Okay, first, going to the allowed uses. The, so the way that I've done this is I've put the screenshot of the staff memo on the left side, and then the proposed language addressing the amendment item on the right-hand side. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Sorry if I'm being too detailed in describing that. I just, I feel like there's a lot going on, so I just want to make sure we're, everybody knows what, what I'm looking at here. Okay, so, this was actually a follow-up discussion item from the 17th, when we talked about indoor recreation. We had two amendment requests from two different property owners asking to change the code to allow indoor recreation in the light manufacturing one, or LM1 zone, and in the industrial zone. And Planning Commission had a discussion about that and had some, you know, concerns about not wanting to, you know, open up the zones too much for use types that aren't really specifically, you know, fitting the purpose of those zones. And so, and also concern about, you know, potential conflicts between recreation uses and the industrial manufacturing-type uses occurring there. And so, staff has put together some proposed language, proposing some zone-specific standards for indoor recreation, excuse me, that would basically limit the types of indoor recreation to smaller-scale, well, I'll just read it here, but, so this is the permitted use table, 1941-050, so we would add under indoor recreation, less than 10,000 square feet. Net floor area, we'd add a P under LM1 and a P under industrial. And then we would add this reference to the zone-specific standards. So, look at this and see, oh, there's some special standards that apply to this use in these zones, and you'd go to that section of the code, which, it's an X right now, because we have, we have some renumbering we need to do. But, so what we came up with was, in the light manufacturing and industrial zones, that limited indoor recreation facilities, including but not limited to fitness centers, gym, gyms, climbing gyms, martial arts studios, and indoor sports courts, like volleyball or basketball, may be permitted when the director finds that the following criteria are met. And then there's some criteria there that the recreational use must be designed to minimize conflicts with adjacent industrial operations, including noise, truck access, and hours of operation, and that the maximum occupancy for such facilities won't exceed 20 people. So, really trying to make sure that these are very small-scale, not drawing a lot of people into those industrial zones to avoid conflicts between uses. So, that's, that is the proposal. So, do you have any questions about that one, or want to discuss?
How was the 20, number of 20 occupants derived? Is it based on some other parameter that we already have in place, or?
Uh, no, nothing specific, just seemed like a, like a, still a small-scale use, and there's nothing scientific there, just seemed like a good number. But, happy to bring back more information if you think it should be more, or?
I'm perhaps seeing consternation.
I'm just trying to figure out, a facility that size, which I'm going to say, I think is sounds kind of small and limited number of people, is it economically viable for anybody to develop the property like that? And again, that's, that's probably not within the realm of what you guys spent a lot of time thinking about, but it seems to me that chances of anybody stepping forward and going, "Yeah, I want to develop a 9,500-foot sports facility."
Yeah.
Pretty limited.
Sorry. I, I mean, I think that sort of the, the thought behind this, or my thought behind this, is that there, there might be conversions of existing buildings, like unused, you know, warehouse space, or, or things like that. It might, you're right, it might not be economically viable to, to develop new, you know, new small-scale facility like this. I don't know that.
I guess, maybe related to the, the 20 number, I would even be okay if, if it was more, I don't know, flexible there, kind of like in A where it says it must be designed to minimize. It's like, okay, you're just making your best effort to minimize, and kind of same thing with the people. I, I would be okay if it, I don't even know the words exactly, but you just said some type of, we're not expecting a full-scale, you know, thing, but not, maybe not limiting it to a number. If that's possible, or if it matters. I mean, I think you might just be, again, making it harder.
Do we have any minimum size or maximum size associated with that category in terms of square feet?
Uh, it's 10, less than 10,000 square feet.
Less than 10?
I'm sort of stumbling around, even if you put a basketball court, if families come to watch participants play, you could easily get over 20 people, and somebody going to close the doors and go, "No, no, that family can't come in and watch." I mean, it, again, it seems excessive to me, excessive restriction on it.
Too restrictive?
Should it be restricted?
No, I say you consider it too restrictive?
Yeah, definitely. I think so.
So, this was based on our conversation last week, where we talked about wanting to keep it at small scale. So, we were trying to strike a balance between having, you know, non-industrial uses in the industrial zone to make sure that it's, you know, being used 24 hours a day, but yet, we don't want the uses to be an impact on the industrial neighborhood. So, it was, the, the way we understood the Planning Commission discussion and the way that staff was looking at it, is we didn't want something big, like a large bowling alley or a basketball stadium. You know, what we're looking for is kind of filling in the areas around the edges of, of the industrial use, where it's not going to impede the industrial use, or use up a bunch of industrial-use land for these types of recreation uses, but allow them in there, because we know that it's going to happen. Like, we frequently see small gyms, like, uh, maybe a, a spin cycle class or something wanting to use an existing loft space, you know, small gym area, a small industrial building. You know, they don't need heat, they just need to open the, open a bay door during the summer to let the hot air out, and they just suffer through the cold in the colder season, because they're working out. So, those, those are the type of uses that we were envisioning filling in existing uses.
I think sometimes it, those types of uses are temporary until a better use for that facility comes along, too. So, we aren't necessar-, we're, when, when it becomes bigger, then it, there's a better use for it. So, I, just looking at the, the examples of the types of activity and thinking, if you have a couple, three teams, 20 becomes pretty restrictive. I would support a number more like 30. I don't know if that does anything for anybody else, or?
I was, I'm, I'll go back to where I was, where I'm saying, could it just say, like, you know, when it talks about the director finds that the following criteria are met, just say that, you know, the not, the maximum occupancy should also take into account that this is an industrial area, and it should not impact industrial operations, and kind of leave it at the director's discretion?
Are you proposing something along the lines of director's discretion relative to the proposed use?
Well, the, I mean, the uses are kind of laid out, I guess, almost what John was saying about why they were trying to limit, I'm saying, just use those words, but don't put a number on there. You, you paraphrase what John was saying about making sure that it's not an impact to the industrial use, but without a, without a number, that's all. Unless we don't trust the director. Who's the director? Is that John? Yeah, I mean, he's a little shifty, so we should probably-
To provide perspective, about 5,000 or 6,000 square feet studios, we've run studios in Seattle, like, we would have upwards of 50 or 60 people. And then, at, at a class time, like, with running two classes simultaneously, but that's for that type of space. Bev across the street with her bar studio has 13 people capacity, and it's, it's pretty small, though, square footage-wise, but.
So, at, at 6,000 square feet, you were running-
Two classes at 30 to 35 people in a class. But, yeah, if you're talking sports teams and people watching, but, but again, it kind of goes back to the use in the industrial zone and how much we want to bring stuff to that area, and, like, I've certainly seen, like, CrossFit gyms, I don't know how many would be in a CrossFit situation personally, or like, spin class, I don't have a sense of that.
Just a reminder to stay closer to the mic, please.
So, should we increase the number to 30 or 35?
Do you, do you want a number on this? Is that helpful for you?
Well, the reason we put the number in is so we have some sort of metric. You know, we tried to lay it out where the intent was pretty clear, and I, we can, I think the feedback is maybe we can flesh that out a little bit more, but, you know, a hard number gives us some enforceability.
I mean, I'd be good with 30. Makes sense for a bigger class or something.
Yeah, no, regardless of what number we put in there, could an applicant apply for greater, on an exception basis, or is that a hard cap?
Well, the honest truth is, we're not really going to look and check, but we could use building codes to say, okay, if you're doing this type of use, you might need this amount of space. We haven't actually gone down that path. We weren't, we weren't envisioning a square foot limit on anything. That's another way we could have, put some metrics into it to, to make sure that it's small enough scale. That would take a little bit, you know, wouldn't be able to figure that out today. We'd have to go back and do some research to see what a typical, you know, CrossFit gym size might be with a reasonable number of people, or reasonable size. I think 10,000 square feet would be more along like Globo Gym, kind of large-scale gym, and that doesn't necessarily seem appropriate.
What if you said something like, I'm sorry, if you said, "Should not exceed 30 people, but at the discretion of the director can be, you know, can be waived," or something like that?
Yeah, that's-
I'm okay with that. Commissioners?
I mean, we don't, we don't like to use "should" a lot in, in code, but-
Okay.
You know, it could be that, you know, maximum occupancy may not exceed 20 people unless the director determines that it won't, that the increase won't adversely affect, you know, won't conflict with adjacent uses, or something like-
We don't want to over-engineer this.
This is only our first one.
Well, this one is a tricky one, because it's a little bit of a, it's, we're trying to allow small-scale uses in a area that's intended for large-scale uses. So, it is a little bit more difficult to put some bounds on, on the small-scale uses.
Commissioner Jurewski, if we increased it to 30, does that bring you over the finish line, or?
I'm still trying to figure out who's going to go count the people and go, "Hey, you got 31 in here, somebody's got to leave." I mean, it's-
Well, I think, is it, like in restaurants where you have-
Capacity.
Fire marshal capacity posted, and-
I think 30 is more reasonable than 20.
Very good. Thank you. I give you something to work with, Libby?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, are we saying 30 or discretion of the director, to that extent?
I'd like to have that also. Yep. Seems so. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just need to make a couple notes here. Okay. Did you? Okay. Just let me know if you wanna say something. Mr. Blaze. Okay. Oh, this, not to belabor the point, but this is just a zoning map showing where the industrial zone and the LM1 zone are. Okay, so the next item in our staff memo table here is in pink. It's on page five still. And the request was to allow self, heavy service and self-service storage in the industrial zone. Oh, you know, I think we did talk a little bit about this. The draft development regulation amendments that are currently out on page 20 of 111 did propose including heavy service as an allowed use in the industrial zone, but staff did not recommend allowing self-service storage in the industrial zone. And I, now I'm remembering we did talk about that. Were there, was there anything that, any questions on that one or additional discussion? Okay. Okay. All right, moving out of 1941 into 1942, which are the form and intensity standards of the code. So you'll notice that all of these ones have to do with the marine mixed use zone. And so I wanted to just give a little bit of background on the marine mixed use zone and, you know, where, when it was established, the goals and policies for that zone when it was established, and a little bit more background in that regard. So this is a map that shows the marine mixed use zone locations in the city. So there's the property on the east side of Q between 17th and 22nd. There's some more marine mixed use out at the ferry terminal on the, on the hill above the terminal there. And then out in Skyline, there's an area that is zoned marine mixed use. And the way that our municipal code development regulations deal with different standards within marine mixed use zones depending on their location. So a lot of standards are applicable to the marine mixed use zone east of Q Avenue. So when we see that, this is the area that we're talking about. The MMU zones, or zone areas west of Q Avenue are the areas out on the west, west end of town. So the amendments that we're going to be discussing primarily affect the MMU zone on the east side of Q Avenue. So a little bit of background about the marine mixed use designation. It has been around since the 2016 comprehensive plan update. So that was the last periodic update that the city did. It took several years to complete that process, just like our current periodic update. So that was a process that went on between 2013 and 2016. And during that process, there was a recognized need to address the community's vision for the central Fidalgo Bay waterfront area. And so there were several public workshops, one waterfront-specific workshop that was hosted by the city with the property owners' cooperation to really dive deep and look at what the community wanted to see in those areas along Fidalgo Bay on the waterfront. And these are some pictures actually from those meetings. We had really a packed house at the, at the workshop that was specific to the waterfront on Fidalgo Bay. And, you know, did fun charrettes with building blocks and maps and had folks, you know, spell out what they were interested in and seeing in that area. So all of that resulted in establishing a new marine mixed use, land use designation, and implementing zone in the comprehensive plan, in the 2016 comp plan. And then there were also new goals and policies added to the comprehensive plan that address development in the marine mixed use zone along Fidalgo Bay. And this is just an example of the, a goal specific to that area and then the policy relating to developing form-based design standards for Fidalgo Bay waterfront that promote coordinated development and enhance Anacortes' unique marine character. And then after that, there's a list of, you know, here's all the things that future development regulations should sort of try to achieve. And then after the comprehensive plan update was completed in 2016, the city moved on to development regulations, so creating the actual standards that would implement the goals and policies in the 2016 comprehensive plan. And that was another, you know, long process because it involved a pretty significant rewrite of the development regulations. And it wasn't all about marine mixed use. It was much, much more, but that was a pretty significant part of that effort. And so that resulted in new regulations and design standards relating to the marine mixed use zone. And then, you know, also, I mentioned earlier that there's different applicability depending on where the marine mixed use zone falls on the side of Q Avenue. And then the development regulation update also achieved rezoning the area from its former zone of commercial marine one to marine mixed use. And this table down here is just showing the, on the left-hand side is the comprehensive plan marine mixed use policy objectives. So kind of a summary of what came out of the public process in thinking about the waterfront area, and then the development regulations that are implementing each of those policies that are in our Anacortes municipal code. So really, the marine mixed use policy or goal is, you know, to create an area that includes commercial, hospitality, cultural, and recreational uses. Residential uses are allowed if the overall site includes a horizontal mix of uses. So that was one of the items in the previous regulations. That was sort of a challenging aspect was that residential was only allowed above first-floor commercial use. And that was, we heard that that was challenging to, to build and possibly fill all of the retail space that would result from that. And so through that public process, there was, ultimately arrived at a 60% number that sort of identified how much of the overall property could be developed as single-purpose residential. So that means just a single-purpose building, just a residential building, not, not mixed use. And so that was kind of a compromise to make sure that there was still a mix of uses occurring at that site, including, you know, the things that we heard from the community, but also allowing for residential development. And then these are the rest, the other important, the other important pieces that we heard were, you know, providing physical and visual access to the water, ensuring that the development, building layout, orientation was, you know, the standards are intended to reduce the perceived scale of large buildings and emphasize human-scale design. There is a policy that talks about height maximums within the area. The maximum height is, in the comp plan, four stories with the ability to go up to six via provision of certain public amenities. And we'll talk more about that in just a minute. And then also ensuring that there was flexibility built into the code so that it wasn't overly prescriptive and there were options for, you know, proposing different types of, different ways of meeting the purpose of the different development standards that are in the code. And then on the right side, that's just, well, I already said that. That's where all of the code provisions are that, that implement the policies from the comp plan. So I just wanted to give that background because when you look at the code, it kinda seems like there's just, you know, random regulations kinda strewn throughout, but it really does all kind of come back to the comp plan and the process that we went through and the goals and policies for that, for waterfront development on Fidalgo Bay. Okay, so the, oh, just one more thing. So when we're talking about the, I mentioned the maximum building height, then marine mixed use zone is 45 feet, and there's a possibility to go to 65 feet if a building or development integrates certain amenities to achieve, or through provision of these amenities, they can achieve additional height for buildings. And so on the right-hand side here is just a summarized list. There is a menu in the code that identifies all of the different potential options that a development could propose in order to achieve the additional building height. And the code says that buildings integrating one of these features gets an additional 10 feet above bonus height, or, excuse me, above the base height, and buildings integrating two features get 20 feet additional above the base height. And so, you know, there's, there's quite a few options that could, could be looked at and provided in order to allow for buildings up to 65 feet. And this all came out of that public process updating the development regulations. So getting back to our memo, this is the request from MJB here that was docketed. And one of the public amenities within that list is to provide space for a public park equal to at least 5% of the gross floor area of the building, but not less than 10,000 square feet in area on a site agreed by and dedicated to the city. And so that's one of the options. The requested amendment would, proposes to, let's see, change the minimum to qualify for the bonus incentive from 10,000 to 5,000, and do not necessarily require dedication of that space to the city. Staff's recommendation on this was to consider keeping the minimum 5% and the 10,000 square feet minimum for the opens, or for the public park area space, and consider making this a double bonus instead of worth 10 additional feet. It could be worth 20 additional feet. So that's one, one thought. And the reason for that is because, you know, anything less than 10,000 square feet is, is not really large enough to provide usable park space, kind of the, what's envisioned with this bonus incentive is like a true, you know, public park area, not just, you know, pedestrian plaza or something like that. And then, let's see, so with regard to not requiring dedication to the city, staff's suggestion on that was that, yeah, maybe there could be flexibility on whether dedication is, is required or not, but commission may want to think about whether there need to be additional requirements on the space, like, you know, that it has to be open to the public from such and such time or, you know, a certain amount of time out of the year, you know, maintenance requirements, et cetera. So, things to consider. I think, oh, I just had a couple more slides to try to illustrate what 10,000 square feet looks like. And I, I know Kirkland, yeah, but this is just an example of Totom Lake and Kirkland and a public, well, this line, whoops, it looks like this got shifted a little bit. But this is a open, public park area that's part of a development, like urban neighborhood with, you know, larger-scale buildings. I don't know, that's probably like five or six stories, but this is showing kind of what the size is and what that looks like from the, from the ground level. And then I had a local example of 10,000 square feet, just because I think it's easier to picture when, you know, the area, but this is the kind of grassy area, not, not to suggest that this is a proposal or anything, but this is the grass area in front of the Marine Tech Center, and there's the little jogging statues here. So if you can just imagine the area from the sidewalk to the south in front of that building there, that's about 10,000 square feet. That's, that's all I have on this particular one. Is there any discussion, or Jimmy, would you like to say anything?
Hi, Jimmy Blaze, Kirkland, Washington. I represent MJB Properties. Appreciate the review of the proposed change. The, the goal of this was just to make it equitable and align in the code here too, where 5% we supported, 10,000 being the minimum, didn't really line up for that 5%. That would require a 200,000-square-foot building, which is a massive building by any right. Most apartment buildings are more in the 120 to 150,000 square feet, and that's for a, quite a large 150 or so unit apartment building. And so trying to have this actually equitably line up. We'd fully support the city's proposal for making this a double bonus if 10,000 is the minimum, and would, you know, appreciate the consideration of not requiring it as a dedication to the city. It could still be a dedication as an easement or to the public, but the city doesn't always want these spaces under their ownership, because then they also have to maintain them. There become some conflicts of who's maintaining what in a spot pattern throughout this development. So appreciate the consideration.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Blaze?
I just have questions. I'm not sure who's gonna answer them. Your chart notes 60% can be dedicated to single-use residential of the site. Is that correct?
60% of the overall site?
Site.
Yeah.
Okay. Is, 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 what, what, what's the requirement for open space or lot coverage? So I guess what I'm trying to back into is what's the number that could be dedicated to other kinds of buildings for other kinds of usage?
The minimum, so, for, for multifamily development, there's a minimum amount of open space per unit depending on the number of bedrooms.
No, I'm just...
Sorry, I'm, say again, please.
60% of the site is, is max allowable for, but if office building, for example, with some retail, how much of the, how much of the remaining 40% of the site can be dedicated to that kind of development?
Oh, it could all be that kind. It could all be non-residential development. Residential's not a required...
By buildings, is that what you're saying?
Pardon?
The site could be almost 100% covered by different kinds of development, different types of buildings, different usages?
Well, as long as they're permitted use in the marine mixed use zone, yeah. It's, it doesn't, residential is not, you know, a requirement. It's, the 60% is an upper limit for...
Okay, so for the developer, what else can that developer put in there legally at this point? What's allowed in there besides residential, I guess is my question?
Yeah, all kinds of things. Hospitality, hotel, retail, small-scale medical, I think. We could go to the permitted use table to see the extent.
You've told me there's options.
Recreation.
I just wanted to understand there was options.
Yeah.
And then there's obviously tremendous amount of concern about having open space between buildings for view corridors and all. And my question then is if you need 10,000 feet of area dedicated to open space or parks, can the view corridor areas, the parts that aren't going to be developed or covered with buildings, can that be part of that 10,000 configuration?
This list of bonus incentives is above and beyond any minimum requirement that applies to a single building. So if you're, if they are building a apartment building, that apartment building has to have park, you know, off-street parking. It has to have its own, you know, minimum open space associated with that building. This particular item in the list of bonus incentives is above and beyond any of those minimum requirements.
Okay, so if the developer wants to develop 85% of the site with a variety of things besides just apartments, that 15% can't be utilized as that open space or park space? Can it have dual purposes, not developed and be part of the park space configuration?
I'm not sure I'm quite following the question. There's, can you say it a different way or can you say it again? I'm not.
Let's say the plans that are acceptable to the city and the community are basically 85% coverage of the entire acreage of the site. Do you follow that perception? And then that 15% that isn't going to be developed for buildings, can that be in the calculation for the open space that we're requiring? The parks and the public areas?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't have to.
But there's no, but there is no minimum public park area just in the basic standards. That is only, this requirement applies if the developer chooses this. It's totally optional. If they choose to select this particular bonus incentive out of the list of incentives, then this gives them additional building height above and beyond what the base height is.
And so my question simply is that the area that's not going to be developed by, with buildings and concrete and brick facade on the buildings, can that be included in that amount they need to get the extra 20 feet?
Sure, if it meets those, if it meets these requirements, yeah.
Are you nodding your head that you understand the question and, oh, okay. I want to understand what the developer perception of what's going to be allowed because obviously that has a huge impact on the viability of making this project make sense.
If I understand it, the answer's a little convoluted because there are certain open spaces that are required within the development already that we could not take this 10,000 square feet and say, the central waterfront corridors that we have to have throughout the property or the waterfront esplanade that we have to have throughout the property, this 10,000 feet couldn't be plopped over those waterfront corridors and say, you know, that's what we're going to use to count for the bonus height. This would have to be in addition to those open space requirements that already exist into the code.
Gotcha.
If that hopefully answers the question.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Grage, just to make sure I'm following the terminology right. And the language here that says, and dedicated to the city means turning title of that real estate or that parcel to the city and thereby transferring the responsibility for maintenance and upkeep to the city?
Yeah, I think that's what that intends.
Why would the city want that?
I'm sure they don't, but neither does the developer. That's the problem, who's going to pay for the maintenance and upkeep?
Well, it'd be a public park. I mean, so yes, it is additional expense, but that way the city can maintain it as it, you know, sees fit and it's city property, it's open to the public. We don't have to worry about, you know, having an agreement with the private developer and policing that as well, you know, making sure that it's open to the public. And it's, I mean, I can see, you know, pros and cons on both sides, so.
I believe we have some of those conditions in the city already.
We do.
Yes. Is it creating a problem for staff?
There are sometimes things that pop up, yeah.
Am I not understanding this right when it says do not, so the proposal is not to require the dedication to the city, meaning the developer can choose to just maintain maintenance and not turn it over as a park, right? So that's as an option, that's a proposal?
That's what is being requested by.
Which may be favorable to the city if it's done well.
Right, yeah, there are things to consider to ensure that it's still available to the public and maintained to a certain level in perpetuity, yeah. So there would be more to that than.
And I guess a question too is that, I think Jimmy, you had mentioned that that space then you could also grant access and still maintain it, but it would give you the ability to have continuity, the way I'm understanding it, for the development? But then that could be a consideration. If we want access for the public, are you saying that that's still an option? We could still grant 20, you know, 24-hour access to the public or within reasonable standards the way we maintain a park? But then you would maintain it as the developer? Okay, that's helpful.
I think the incentives are there that it is in the best interest of the investor in the surrounding properties that that public space be maintained, designed and maintained well to protect their investment and their ongoing revenue streams. My experience has been that's very effective. If you separate the ownership, less successful.
I'm in favor of that portion of it for, you know, that makes sense to me, but.
Yeah, my thoughts are that I'm okay with the 10,000. I would like it not to be dedicated to the city, but I would like it to be, have public access.
I concur.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've all just said we agree with what's in the blue, the proposal, right? The 10,000, but making it worth two to make it worth the developer's time and then again flexibility on the dedication requirements.
Yeah. Right, so that's, again, the blue part here is just staff's comments embedded within the draft code. So this is, yeah, consideration. We didn't actually make any changes to the actual text, so that would still need to be accomplished. So based on planning commission's direction, you know, or your recommendation that amendments could be made to this section to affect the, what we've put in there.
I guess one last question. If some of these units are condos, at a certain point in sales, the developer turns that over to the condo association. Will the condo association then be responsible for maintenance and make sure the public still has access and everything? Because the developer no longer owns that building.
Yeah.
If they're successful, they've sold the units.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think the city would want to make sure that they're, you know, that the public space, which is intended, the building's going to be there that has achieved the additional height for a long, long time. So making sure that the public amenity that was provided in exchange, you know, for at least as long, you know, or perpetuity is something that we would need to do.
Yep, my experience has been that that travels to the condo association, the homeowners association, or the investor in a space, whether it's a commercial. And that keeps the incentive in the right place.
Yeah, it would be, you know, conditioned on the project and probably recorded to the title through the, you know, condo declaration and notice on title. There are different ways to do that.
Commissioner McCombs, you with us? We don't want to forget you if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah, I'm following along. I just have a hard time with my mute button, I guess. I think I concur with the discussion. I like the, I think 10,000 as a minimum is probably a good benchmark. And then I don't really, I can see value, I guess. I don't know that we need to turn every park over to the city if, as long as it's maintained and there's public access.
Okay, anything else on that one? We can move on.
Keep moving.
Okay. This next one is related to building height modifications. So it's in 1942, 120. There is a standard in this section that relates to the marine mixed use zone east of Q Avenue. There's also one above it that relates to, I think, to the MMU zone west of Q Avenue. But basically what this says is that if the base height is 45 feet and then there are, there's the ability to go up to 65 feet. Buildings are also subject to these additional special height, width, and orientation standards. So there's reference to the building massing and articulation standards in 1963, which apply to all, you know, new development even outside of marine mixed use. And then buildings up to four stories tall or no more than 50 feet tall are limited to 200 feet in width in the north-south direction. And then buildings that are taller than four stories or more than 50 feet tall are limited to 150 feet in width in the north-south direction. And so I have a map here that just shows approximately. I know it's kind of hard to tell, but the yellow line is showing about 200 feet. And this one is about 100 feet. The purpose of this special standard in this area is just to, well, reduce the, you know, overall perceived scale of buildings that are very tall and long and also to ensure that there's still, you know, visibility to the water. This helps in achieving that anyways. The request from the property, or from MJB is to eliminate the requirement for, or the minimum, sorry, maximum width of 150 feet in the north-south direction for buildings that are more than 50 feet tall. And just to have the maximum of 200 feet for any buildings in that zone. I guess from staff's perspective, we, you know, we do think that this is an important part of implementing some of the policies in the comp plan with regard to maintaining marine views and reducing scale of large buildings. There are also departure options available. If a project were to propose something that is taller than 50 feet and wanted to go above 150 feet, there are, there is a pathway for that to happen provided that the proposal could show that they're meeting the purpose of that standard in some other way. So that's what this section down here is talking about, is that they could propose, let's see, departures of this section considered provided site and building design features are included to reduce the perceived scale of such buildings. So that could take, you know, that could be any number of things. Add visual interest and enhance east-west pedestrian access and marine views. So there's, I mean, I guess the bottom line is there is an option, there is a pathway to go above that 150 feet for a building that's taller than 50 feet.
My gut reaction is, well, let you go ahead first.
Thank you again for hearing me out. So this zone is the only one in the entire city that has this requirement. It was a late add to the development regulations. And the intent of the development regulations when we put them in was to always go back and actually look at some of these further to see if they made sense or not. Here we are 12 years later and that never happened. This is one of those where it was put in and then additional provisions and additional provisions and additional provisions were put in on top of it in order to make sure exactly what the departure section is stating is achieved. So for the 200-foot maximum on this property, unlike any other zone in any other property really in the city, there are dedicated central waterfront corridors that have to be put so that you can see the water. So it breaks up the massing of that east-west direction. And there's also anytime you get above the 50 feet, a view study is required in order to actually go above 50 feet. And building massing articulation standards are already in place. Again, for anytime you get above 50 feet, having to set back buildings so that they don't actually impact the perception of it being a wall along the waterfront here. And so I beg you to try to think about this of reducing, you know, the ability to develop in a cost-effective manner to be able to go above the 150 feet in the east-west direction as we're already required to, you know, break apart that, already required to do view studies, already required to do building massing. In the need to go to essentially a conditional use, anytime we go above 150 feet in width just is an arduous process that just doesn't make sense to us. So appreciate the consideration.
Just one.
Questions?
Just one clarification or a couple. I believe that the view study applies to the marine mixed use zones west of Q Avenue. I'll have to double-check that. So, yeah. And then also the departure option that is provided does not add any additional procedural requirements. It doesn't add any sort of public hearing that wouldn't already be required based on the underlying, whatever the underlying land use permit is that's being applied for, for the development. It's intended to be reviewed as part of the, as part of the underlying review process. So it doesn't add an additional permit type or review. So it really shouldn't add any time or complication. It's just an applicant demonstrating how they've met the intent or the purpose of the standard through an alternative means.
Am I understanding you to say that a CUP would not be required?
Yes, correct, it would not.
I mean, I think that sounds reasonable, what Libby's saying. But, I mean, the provisions there in place, I can understand the point that it seems like one extra thing, but I think in the realm of all this, it's, I think that's reasonable to leave that as it is. Leave it at the 150 feet and leave the departure, you know, you have the option for the departure to that.
Politely like to disagree and say that I'd be in favor of changing that to 200 feet for a 65-foot building with the restrictions that are automatically built in with view corridors and everything else.
Commissioner McCombs, your thoughts?
I mean, without having seen the plan and the view corridors and stuff, it seems to make sense though. You don't want to impede the development if you're still going to achieve the goal of having the visualization effect. And then, and again, trying to maximize the ability of the developer to make this, have this make sense and balance it out with the public wanting to see clearly the water. It sounds like if that can be accomplished, I'd be open to looking at expanding it to 200.
Commissioner McCombs, any comments on this one?
Yeah, I think I would probably stick with it how it is. You know, when I talk to people in Anacortes, you know, I think one of the biggest concerns. You know, when I talk to people in Anacortes, you know, I think one of the biggest concerns is losing views of the water. A six-foot, or a six-story building that's 200 feet wide is, or long is, is a, it's a big building. And so I, I agree, I think, the 150-foot restriction for taller buildings, the way the verbiage is now.
Thank you. On this one, I tend to agree with the staff recommend, or not tend, I agree with the staff recommendations, which means our feedback from the commission to staff is kind of a mixed bag. We haven't given you, depending on how you count, it's three to two or two to three.
Sorry, can you say that again?
I think what the feedback you're getting from the commission without a roll call vote is a split, split vote. About half of us are in favor of the, staying with the recommendations of the staff, and half would like to eliminate the 150 portion.
Okay.
Not sure that helps you that much.
Well, that, I mean, that's.
I, I feel, I, I don't have a lot of heartburn keeping it the way it is just because there are ways to get there, like we said, that isn't a conditional use process. It sounds like it'd be a little easier than what, what it might have been, because that would have been a harder, harder pill to swallow, but it sounds like we can get there anyway. So.
That, that's in fact what swung me to that direction, was that you didn't have to go on a separate process for a CUP. It's part of the normal administrative process without another thing that could potentially go in series rather than in parallel.
Then you can make an argument that, yeah, no, we can't achieve what the public is looking for and then still, you know, be able to get that extra step to make it a little more viable.
So we'll keep it as is. Head nods. All right.
I think the commission slightly leans that way. We can take it, we can entertain a motion if that would be useful.
I, I think that's all right. I think we could. Yeah, I don't think we need to do a, a separate motion. We'll just keep it as is, which did not propose making any adjustments to the actual text language. And then we could include some discussion about it in the, ultimately what the planning commission's recommendation is after the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one is on page six of 15 in the staff memo. And this also relates to building, building height standards, modification requirements applicable in the, that's actually the central business district and the marine mixed-use zone, because these are areas where the tallest buildings are allowed in the city. So in the CBD zone, you can also go up to 65 feet with some bonus incentives as well. And so this design standard applies in both places, and it basically is requiring that buildings incorporate a minimum horizontal step back of eight feet along at least 75% of the street facade. So it's the portion of the building that's facing the street. And that the required step back must be placed somewhere between the ground floor and the top, and the top floor. And so this is just an illustration showing what that looks like. And that is a, a way to reduce the, again, you know, at the pedestrian level, reduce the, the bulk of the building. It's one of the methods that can be used to, to do that. The request, let's see, so the request was to remove or clarify the step-back requirement. So I think there was some question about what facade meant. Did that mean, did that mean every side of the building or just this, the portion of the building facing the street? And the answer to that is that it's just the, the street wall face of the building, and facade is actually defined in our code. So we didn't feel like there was a need to make any clarification on that particular issue. We had a suggestion in here, if the commission wanted to entertain it, is to reduce the total area down to 50%. That would still ensure some modulation or adding a new departure option where somebody could propose, you know, something less than 75%, but demonstrate how they're otherwise meeting the intent of this, of this code section. So there should, could be a couple of different routes to go.
And to provide further clarification here, so this only applies when you exceed the maximum base height. And what I believe the intent of the code was to be, is that once you exceed that maximum base height, you need to set back 75% of the building above that maximum base height, eight feet back, which is similar to what the actual diagram there shows of you have to require the setback someplace between the ground floor and the top floor, eight feet back. It wasn't the intent where, once you go above that base height, that the entire facade of the building, 75% of your entire facade, had to step back by eight feet. And so clarifying, or the requested clarification is just that the 75% of the street-facing facade that is above the maximum base height is set back by that eight feet. So you could still do it anywhere between the ground floor and the uppermost floor, but you had to do at least, you know, that on the uppermost floor that did exceed that base height.
I, I guess I'm curious, Libby, do you agree with what he just said then?
I'm thinking about it. I, that is not the way that I understood the request. So I might have to, I might have to look at that further. Well, I mean, I, I think this seems pretty clear to me, that the, that for buildings which exceed the maximum base height, buildings must incorporate a minimum horizontal step-back of eight feet along at least 75% of the facade. The required setback must be placed somewhere between the ground floor and the top floor. So I don't, I don't see where it says that it has to be the portion above the base height, but we might have to, I might have to dig into that some more.
I'm thinking that the last sentence in that paragraph is very clear, but the one before it is less clear to me.
Well, doesn't, for, seems like it would say for portions of buildings which exceed the maximum base height must incorporate a minimum step-back of eight. Yeah, I, I think this, I think I'm not going to be able to provide a good recommendation here without delving a little deeper.
I think the intent of both staff and the applicant is that, that top portion is the minimum, but you can do the setback starting at any floor below that if you so choose.
Who provided the, the illustration? The illustration makes it real clear that it's the top floor only that has the setback.
That's in our code. So that was the, we used Makers as a consultant on our code rewrite. And so that was something that they provided. So this is just a screenshot, straight from the municipal code.
Now, there is the language there to the right side of the illustration, that the required setback must be placed somewhere between ground floor and the top floor. So the words are pretty clear, but the, the diagram is less clear.
I think the diagram is real clear.
Well, to me, to me, the diagram says that it's supposed to be just up to the top.
Right, that's pretty clear.
But that's not what the words say.
Okay, further clarification needed. Should we move on?
Please.
Okay. So I think on this, on this particular one, I'll bring back that information on the 22nd, the public hearing. Okay, so moving out of 1942, form an intensity into 1943 residential uses. So rooming houses, that was an area of a little, a little bit of confusion about whether, not confusion, but just trying to determine whether that is a type of use that is, that we need to have in our code anymore, because we are now required to include co-living housing, which is very similar, the definition for that type of use is very similar to what the rooming house definition is in our code. After reviewing this issue in a little more detail, staff is now recommending that we delete the rooming house term and definitions and use standards from the code, because the co-living housing type will now kind of supersedes or replaces, provides standards for that type of living arrangement in the higher density and mixed-use zones where multifamily is permitted, where we are required to allow co-living. Excuse me. And in the, in my memo, I said that the details of the proposed updated changes will be presented at the October 1st meeting, and that's, here we are. So the, the recommended code, code edits would be, as I mentioned, to, and I'm sorry, I don't have this in strike-through, underline, but hopefully it's clear enough, to delete rooming house from residential use standards. In 1943 010, that's where we talk about the different residential categories. In the draft, here, I'll, I'll just open up the code.
And if you recall, the planning commission discussion around this last time, there was some confusion about what's the difference between a rooming house and, and a co-living house. And there's not a lot of difference, however, the co-living house is really intended to be a much larger thing than what we think of as like a, the traditional rooming house. So what you'll see here is, as we, as Libby takes us through, they are kind of different, but we're, we're eliminating rooming house because they are kind of covered by this. These co-living houses seem to imply like a podments, you know, when I, when I, that term, they're, they're apartments where each resident has maybe like a kitchenette, maybe not a bathroom, and, and, but yet they have their own, kind of what feels like an apartment unit, you know, like a small studio space, but they maybe have to share a kitchen with the floor or the building. And they can be really small spaces. They might have a bathroom, they might not, they might have a sink, but, you know, shower facilities might be in another part of the building. So that's what co-living houses are. I think rooming houses are an, an old-timey term. And just the way, way living has evolved, co-living better covers what we think of as rooming houses. So that's why we've eliminated rooming houses from here, because it's covered by, by the co-living house. However, co-living houses intended to be large-scale, so they're required to be allowed in multifamily areas. So that, that's really where you get this implication of these are intended to be these apodment-type, larger buildings. And so we'll, as Libby goes through here, you'll see, we're also suggesting removing co-living housing from the residential neighborhoods, because their, the co-living could be larger. So we're just focusing them on, in the multifamily areas where the state law requires that we allow them.
Commissioner Juritzky?
How would you categorize it, like a five-bedroom house that's used for transition housing, let's say?
Well, it depends. If it's an Oxford house, then, if it's an Oxford house, then it's definitely under, under law is required to be treated as a single-family house. And you bring up a good point that Libby, I think, maybe pointed out in the past and is, is a really good point. Even if it's, say you have a large, single-family home and you rent out eight of your bedrooms to people, that is a single-family house. And that's how it's regulated, that's how the state law sees them. So that's another reason why we were leaning towards getting rid of rooming houses altogether, because state law protects, you know, you using a single-family house and renting out rooms to friends or whoever.
Has state law limited the number of non-related people who can live in a house? I mean, that's, for example, that's how Bellingham got around.
No, it actually, it actually says that you can't.
You can't limit that?
Yes.
Okay. I know Bellingham tried to restrict how many students were living in houses in residential neighborhoods away from the college.
Right. And it, I think, I think those laws came into place largely in response to College Town, College Town's trying to put limits on that type of use.
Think, thanks for clarifying that. Okay, so I was trying to pull up the actual code section, because I, things, things got a little bit confusing in the, in the draft, because staff had proposed to relocate rooming house from the group living category into the household living category. So when we're talking about deleting that, we would be undoing that move and then deleting it from where it originally was, if that makes sense. Hopefully it does. So I just wanted to show you. So rooming house, this is the relocated location in the code. We added a, a new section in the household living section and added, made these changes. It used to live in the group living section, as I mentioned. But I neglected to actually show it and then cross it out, so I apologize for the, it gets confusing. So, but the bottom line is that staff's recommending just removing rooming house wherever it exists in the current code and the, the draft proposal. And we would do that in the next draft. Does that ma, do you want more, further explanation about that? Okay.
I think I followed.
I don't think so. Okay. Oh, and also deleting the term border, because rooming house is the only definition that uses the term border. So we could just eliminate both of those. Okay, so this, this next one is also related to marine mixed-use zone. These standards that we're going to be talking about are going back to These standards that we're going to be talking about are going back to the discussion we had about the 60% maximum site of that marine mixed-use zone area east of Q Avenue could be covered by single-purpose residential development, and so that is implemented in different sections of our code, including the townhouse provisions, the multifamily provisions, and the assisted living provisions, so it's kind of the same language in each of those different sections. Excuse me, so just for example, this is the townhouse section, and it talks about, in the marine mixed-use zone east of Q Avenue, townhouse and other permitted residential use within single-purpose buildings may cover up to 60% of the site area, provided they meet access site and building design standards in the title, associated parking, landscaping, open space, and other facilities accessory to the residential uses are included within that site area, so included in the 60% of the site calculation. And then it offers this option to increase the 60% maximum through a framework development plan, which is different than a departure. Framework development plan is an option that would go to the, I believe it requires city council approval, so if, if the person that was developing this site wanted to exceed 60% of single-purpose residential, that is a possibility, but it is the additional process above and beyond that goes through a public process, and ultimately approval by city council. The, so MJB was requesting that the landscaping and open space areas that our require, otherwise required, just as part of development of residential uses, be excluded from that 60% maximum for the overall site. And I'll let Jimmy explain the specifics.
Thank you, Libby. So as Libby mentioned, what we're proposing is to remove the landscaping and open space calculations into, or out of, the overall 60% maximum that we can develop for townhouses, assisted living, and residential multifamily buildings. So essentially, if we go in and we add a open space park associated with one of the multifamily buildings, or as part of the assisted living facility, that say 10,000 square foot park would count against the total area that we could actually have for our residential quota on the entire site. So what the code is inadvertently doing here is pushing us to minimize landscaping and open spaces associated with the residential development, and forcing it elsewhere on the commercial side of things, and not really allowing a cohesive development that, you know, allows for more landscaping and open space. We can go through the framework development process to get around this, the framework development process requires a city council-level decision, and all of the public hearings and other things that we already went through is shown by Libby, in order to actually get the zoning code here. So, again, just requesting that we're allowed to remove that, so we can add more parks and open space, and not have that count against our residential capacity on the site.
So, staff's recommendation was not parceling out the landscaped areas, because they are actually associated with the, the part of the development that requires them, and so it doesn't help to meet the larger intent regarding the use mix in, in the marine mixed-use zone, and it would also be challenging to, challenging to administer a change like this. So it's a little complicated, difficult to conceptualize, I, I realize. What are your questions?
It seems like the, the decision on in or out effectively changes the 60% figure.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would agree.
So to clarify that, by not requiring the landscaping, then your 60% is taken up by the building, any hard driveways, walkways, and then you would have 40% of the lot that would be landscaping or park? Is that, is that a safe assessment?
Commercial.
Or fair assessment? Accurate?
I think I know the answer to that one, I think it's commercial, is, it throws it over the commercial side.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry.
So if we, if we.
Mr. McCombs.
Yeah, sorry, if, if you create, if you build a building, a residential building, an MMU, and it is, you're taking up 60% of the site, I guess where does the landscaping go if you, if you don't require it within that 60%?
Well, I, I think, yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
To answer your question, it would essentially eat into the commercial percentage on the site, and just as an alternative, and sorry this wasn't proposed, but after hearing Libby's comment there, what we would also be willing as a middle ground here to say of, the landscaping and open space above the minimum required by code wouldn't count against the 60%, so we do have to provide some minimum landscaping, you know, as part of our building design, and for our apartment buildings, there's so much per apartment unit that you have to have, what we're trying to get away from is, if we decided to add park space above and beyond the minimum that's required, that that would not count against our actual residential capacity.
So that park space would be included then in the, as a part of your figure for landscaping, in addition, or maybe part of the 40%, I guess, not the 60%?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, I think I agree. I think I agree with you, the, that the, any landscaping or open space that are required as a minimum associated with a new building or development, I think it's reasonable to not include those in the, in the 60% maximum, because it's, like you said, it's above and beyond, so we're, we're just talking about whatever the, the minimum code requirement is for open space landscaping, that is included in the 60%.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're all tracking. Okay? And I don't, I mean, I think that there could be some clarification, we could look at making some clarification to this language, to address that.
I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads with that clarification.
Thanks for helping me through that. Anything else on that one? So, it's, it's, I have two more slides here, but it's the same issue for multifamily development and then assisted living, so any of those types of residential uses on the site are subject to the same, that same standard. Onto Division 6. This is on page 9 of 15 of the staff memo, and this is related to balcony projections, so there is a section in the code that talks about site planning, and it is considering the relationship of a new development to adjacent properties, and it has standards to make sure that development is functional and also compatible between sites. So there is a section that talks about. Got to wrap my brain around this before I try to, so in 1962-03-0C, there is a section that talks about light and air access and privacy near interior side and rear setbacks, so this is related to buildings or portions thereof containing multifamily dwellings whose only solar access is from the applicable side of the building facing towards the interior side property line. So this, this is trying to illustrate what I just said, and this is also in the code, this particular screenshot, but here's an, here's a property line, and here's a new building, so, and, and then these are individual units. So this unit here only has windows on one side, and it's the side that's facing the interior property line, so it's not able to get solar access, it's on a corner lot, or a corner unit, it's only getting solar access via whatever windows it has on, on the side that is facing the internal property line, which is usually a smaller setback required, five feet or seven and a half feet in, in some cases, and in order to, you know, avoid situations where there is not adequate solar access for those units that only have windows on that side of the building, this code requires that those units or those portions of the building be set back at least 15 feet from the property line, instead of the five feet or whatever the other minimum setback would be required. And the, the request here is that, I believe, is that the code be clarified that with, if, if this is the case, that balconies that are proposed as part of these units be allowed to project within, or into that 15-foot setback, which staff thinks, feels is a reasonable request to, to clarify that that's the case.
So Libby's included a nice diagram here where it clearly shows that the porches and the decks cannot protrude into that 15-foot setback, and so the change would be move that building up enough where the, where the building would only have to be 15 feet or less from the setback.
And this is, this is a provision that applies in, in other situations and other zones, allowing for balconies to go into the setback.
I'm, I'm seeing head nods up and down here. Commissioner McCombs, any comment on this one?
Is there a limit on how far the balcony can protrude into the setback? 15 feet?
Six.
Okay, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. All right. Oh, we're almost done. So this next one is related to internal open space, and this provision is also in the site planning requirements, and I'm sorry, I, this relationship to adjacent properties is wrong, that shouldn't be there, but this is, these are requirements for new residential development to provide internal open space, and when I say internal open space, that just, that means on the property, it doesn't necessarily mean internal to the building, although that is an option. So there are minimum requirements based on the number of units and the number of bedrooms, I believe, so, you know, that says, that you need to provide a certain square footage of, of internal open space per unit. And then that requirement can be fulfilled in multiple different ways, so there's lots of options to, to pick and choose from. The space can be provided using shared open space, so just on the ground level, and that can even be in the setback as well, so an area that can be shared and used by all of the people that live in the development. There's also ground-level individual outdoor space, so little, you know, fenced-in patio areas, balconies can be include, balconies meeting certain standards, I think there's a minimum size, can be included in fulfilling that open space requirement. You can have indoor recreation areas, so like a community room, or a, like a physical fitness, you know, room or facility, or something like that. And then there's also an option for fulfilling the, a portion of the requirement through shared roof decks, so that's the facilities that are located on, on top of the building. We have a couple of examples here in town, and the current code allows for multifamily buildings, up to 50% of the required open space can be provided using a shared roof deck, so only up to 50%, and it has to be available to all residents and meet certain requirements for facilities and, and size and, and design. And then the code also allows for mixed-use buildings, so buildings that include residential and other non-residential uses to fulfill the open space requirement, up to 100% of the open space requirement can be provided through, or fulfilled through providing a shared roof deck. So the, this proposed revision in the green actually came from the Housing Action Plan, and the, that suggestion was to remove the applicability in, between single-purpose multifamily buildings compared to mixed-use buildings, and to also allow for intermediate level roof decks to ensure, and to ensure that access is available to, to all residents, so this actually was for mixed-use buildings, reducing the amount of, or reducing the percentage of open space that a roof deck could fulfill for, for a mixed-use development. So that's, the Housing Action Plan recommendation is what you see in the green underline, that's what's proposed in the draft. MJB has requested, considering amending this section, to allow multifamily buildings in horizontal mixed-use development to fulfill 100% of their required internal open space requirements with shared roof decks. And I will invite Jimmy up to say more about that, if you would like.
Sure, I can just say the proposal was made before the, the HAP requested changes here, so we'll remove this one, the intent was to try to line up with vertical mixed-use buildings and horizontal mixed-use buildings having the same provisions, which the HAP is doing, it's a lower percentage than, you know, we prefer, but we'll follow the HAP recommendations.
Great, any questions? Okay, cool.
Libby, I have a question, sorry. That's, so we're, the proposal. That's, so we're, the proposal, the proposal is that for residential, up to 50 percent or up to 100 percent could be shared roof decks?
Sorry, 50 percent. For single-purpose and for mixed-use developments, be the same percentage.
Okay, thank you.
We made it through Division Four and Division Six. Woo! All right, so, next on the agenda is to address some of the miscellaneous follow-up items that the Planning Commission requested additional information on at the last, or at the meeting on the 17th. And those were, so most of this follow-up information was provided with an attachment A of the staff report, or the staff memo that you have in your packet dated September 25th. So, I don't know, just let me know if you want to go more into detail or not, but that is all available in your packet. So, the first one was the questions about, as we were going through and looking at permitted uses in various zones, or questions about the adult concessions code, and whether there was an ability to make changes in where that type of use is permitted within the city. And so, staff did some research and took a look at the past, the legislative history of that particular area of the code, and found that in 2013, there was a pretty significant process that the city went through to develop these regulations and licensing requirements for adult concession uses. And there are, there's kind of a constitutional issues that the city needs to be careful about in terms of just prohibiting outright certain of these types of uses, and also many court cases that provide precedent. So, it looked like through that 2013 process, the city considered all of those issues, and that's all documented in the findings of the ordinance that is codified here. But I just wanted to provide a map that shows where adult concession uses are permitted, because we have the permitted use table, which, you know, makes, at first glance, makes it look like they're, you know, permitted in the commercial LM1, industrial, and HM zones. But then, of course, one must go to the special zone-specific standards to get more information, and I've screens, I have a screenshot of that here. So, in the commercial zone, adult retail is only permitted south of 22nd Street in the commercial zone, so this is circling where that, where adult retail is permitted. And then, in the LM1 zone, the adult concessions are permitted between Christiansen and Reservation, so all of this LM1-zoned property, and then HM, up north of South Marches Point Road, and east of Reservation Road, so very limited areas of the city. And then, there are these, oh, and then the industrial zone. And then, there are these further limitations that address minimum distances from various types of uses, including schools and religious institutions and residential zones, so a bunch of different locational requirements and spacing requirements that apply. And so, I mean, I guess the bottom line is that, staff's recommendation is that we not pursue making changes to these provisions as part of our periodic update. It looks like, you know, going through the process in 2013 was a pretty significant undertaking and looked at all of the different issues involved, and it looks like, you know, arrived at provisions that, you know, meet the, meet the requirements, but also don't go too far in terms of violating people's freedom of speech and constitutional rights.
Libby, it sounds like we vetted that very thoroughly 12 years ago or so. I guess my only, I guess it's more of a rhetorical question, in those 12 years, has there been any significant change in state or federal law that would say we would, should revisit it? As long as that overarching law that we were responding to 12 years ago stays the same, I don't see any reason to go in and reinvent the wheel, but...
Yeah, I'm not aware of any changes. Great. Okay, the next item was MS zone, so manufacturing and shipping, this was related to the area of Commercial Avenue, west of, or west of Commercial Avenue, north of Third Street, south of Second Street, remember the area? So, there was a request for additional information about what, which development regulations would apply to development within the MS zone. And so, in the staff memo, I provided that information. Basically, development in the MS zone is exempt from many of the requirements in our building and site design standards, but with the proposal to extend the, I don't think I have a map, nope, to extend the storefront block frontage designation from its current terminus at Third Street and extend it to Second Street, that would add, that would require that any redevelopment in the MS zone along that corridor comply with the storefront standards, which would include the types of uses that are allowed on the, on the street level, includes window, what do you call it, the transparency requirements at the pedestrian, at the ground level, talks about the minimum design space for the ground level commercial use, like a minimum height and size, requires window, like awnings, weather covered along the sidewalk. That's, that's all I'm thinking of right now. So, at least at the, at the ground level, at the pedestrian level, the adding that block frontage designation does kick in some of those design standards that I think we, you know, want to see to continue that Main Street feel all the way to Second Street. But there, there would still be quite a few that development would be exempt from. So, just providing that information for the commission, I don't know if you, if there are any follow-up questions or additional information that you'd like to have on that topic? Nope? Okay. Rooming houses, we already covered. Okay, one more thing. This is an additional follow-up item that we haven't talked about before, but it has come up, and we've been meaning to address this. So, the, in the central business district, animal care, so like animal grooming, veterinary clinics, you know, types of uses that involve animals that don't involve any sort of outdoor activity are currently a conditional use in the central business district, and commission has experience in reviewing one of those applications. And staff is just proposing that we change that to permitted use in the central business district, because it's, oops, seems excessive to have that, that much process and public hearings and requirements for that, for that type of use. So, I'll just throw it back to you, that's staff's proposal, and interested in your feedback.
Just to make sure I heard right, that what you're proposing here would apply only if all of the animal activity was inside the building?
Yeah. It would just be indoor, animal care indoor, and that is defined here. No outdoor activity associated with the care of animals is allowed.
Any objections?
Okay, thank you. So, we can move along to the Planning Commission's upcoming schedule. We have canceled your October 8th meeting due to lack of staff, and we have the public hearing for the development regulations coming up on October 22nd, as I mentioned already. The Planning Commission, you know, could deliberate and make a recommendation that evening as well. We've built into the schedule some possible options for special meetings if, if needed to continue the public hearing or deliberations if the Planning Commission needs that additional time. But other than that, I don't have anything else for you this evening. Oh, do you want to talk about the downtown Anacortes streetscapes? I just put it at the bottom. Sorry.
I was gonna, that's another agenda item.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Before we lose you, in the memo that we got mid-afternoon today, the attachment on page seven, attachment A, rose a question in my mind that I've noticed before. This attachment is labeled the City of Anacortes Active Transportation Network map. It doesn't distinguish or clarify, in my mind, whether this is the planned network map or the actual network map, and it looks to me like it's planned. For instance, the Gwimish Channel Trail is indicated to go all the way from the ferry terminal into downtown, and it doesn't. So, I think we either need to clarify the labeling or have proposed versus current somehow distinguished.
Okay. That was in the memo from Transpo? Is that what you're referring to? Okay, I'll take a look at that and see what we can do to clarify.
Yeah, and it's, the attachment is one that we've got in our comp plan draft.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, that's all I have, unless there are any other questions? Thank you very much.
I know it seems like a picket fence going by, John, but another week has gone by. Next agenda item is Planning Department update. Seems like you just did this.
Good evening, Planning Commission, John Coleman, Director of Planning, Community, and Economic Development. I really like that analogy, like a picket fence going by. Yes, but I actually do have a little bit something to report this time. So, we're working with a consultant named First Forty Feet. They're working on a downtown streetscapes analysis to look at what we can do, the city commissioned them to look at what we can do to improve our downtown streetscape, whether that be improved trees, or storefronts, or sidewalks, or bulbouts, or whatever, whatever the case may be, they're bringing some expertise to look at our downtown core primarily, and also some things like how our downtown core connects with important features of the city, such as Cap Santa Marina, the depot, Coslin Park, and other areas, kind of in the creative, also, you remember the creative district area is sort of the downtown-ish area, but we're focusing mostly on commercial Ave from 10th, from 12th down to the waterfront, you know, first or second. So, they are holding a public workshop or open house here in this room on October 15th, and we're going to be getting the announcements out for that. We're just perfecting the flyers and the survey materials that they're going to be having. And the idea of that meeting is to invite the public in to talk about, to talk to the consultants, tell them what they like about their downtown, what they like to see improved, and just work with the community to see how we can potentially make, make changes. And then, next year, they'll be putting out some recommendations, and I'm sure there'll be, you know, lots of expensive costs that we'll have to then reappear heads around and figure out a way to make happen in the long run. But first, we want to know what we want to look like, and so, that's what their, that First Forty Feet group is going to be talking about. So, you're welcome to come to that. We will be, we're inviting you and the council, I mean, it's just open to the public, but so if you want to come, it's a great idea. We will be publishing a notice of potential forum, but, you know, Planning Commission won't be there in a meeting setting, or nor with a council, it'll just be in the same room together, so we're always careful about quorums being, you know, at least letting the community know that there might be a quorum, even if there's not business happening.
And that's October 15th at 6:00 PM?
I want to say it's 5:30 to 7:00. 5:30 to 7:00. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Commissioners have anything else for the good of the cause? Commissioner McCombs?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. With that, I will close the special meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission for October 1st. It is 8:07.